I need to.
Okay.
I know I am.
No.
I am, I know I am.
You're being.
I'm indulging myself. I'm indulging my emotions.
Okay, lights are on and we are up. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, feel like I'm in church, everyone has to say good morning. Today's Thursday, October 3rd, workshop agenda, Lee County School Board. We are going to discuss today Head Start Governance and then our regular review of our agenda for our upcoming meeting. So, without further ado, let us go ahead and begin with our Head Start Governance. And ladies, would you like to join us up here at the table? And you can introduce yourselves and take it away.
So, good morning. I'm Jeanne LaFountain, I'm the Director of the Early Childhood Programs along with Title I Migrant and LAMP. This week, we have had the pleasure of having Ms. Deidre Mitchell, our Regional Office Program Specialist, visit us from Atlanta. And she comes, our Program Specialist comes each year to visit programs, they make an annual visit. And Ms. Mitchell was just assigned to our program a few months ago, so this is her first opportunity to come and get to know our program. She's been visiting classrooms, she's met with our parents, she's met with our leadership team. And in her words, she sees our, as she's visited our classrooms, we have happy, loving children that she's been able to be introduced to and has really enjoyed her visit here so far. So, and now she gets to meet you, our Governing Board. And just, her purpose really is to find out what kind of training and technical assistance needs we might have. As you know, it's all about meeting the Head Start Program Performance Standards, so she just wants to have a discussion. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Deidre Mitchell.
Thank you so much, and good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me here this morning. I'm actually going to have a sign and sheet go around, so if everyone could please put their signature, title, and print their name. As Jeanne said, I'm here on an annual site visit, and I actually have fifteen programs in Florida that I have to do the very same thing with. So, again, thank you. I just have a few questions regarding your governing body responsibilities as it relates to the Head Start Performance Standards, as she mentioned. And the first question is, how often do you meet, when do you meet, and where do you meet?
As a board?
As a board.
As a board, we have two scheduled action meetings a month. We have two workshops, unless something else comes up that we add another one or two briefings.
Okay.
And anybody can jump in, is that?
Yeah, well, first I want to welcome you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Paradise.
Thank you.
Atlanta is beautiful, but it's not Southwest Florida, and our traffic is better. You asked where we meet, we meet here.
Yes, okay.
In this building.
Do you ever hold any special meetings?
May I borrow your pens? Of course, thank you.
Regarding anything at Head Start, do you hold any special meetings?
If there's.
Via email, or?
If there is something that, that comes up that we need to brief or whatever, then we all have a special briefing about it. And Ms. LaFountain will drive that process.
I think the only time in my tenure on the board that we've had a, we've had a special meeting about Head Start had to do with that one finding. And then, that was it. For the most part, we just do it as our regular, Head Start is our regular course of business.
Thank you.
And, and we have a board liaison to early childhood Head Start. And I happen to be liaison this year, and I think probably several people sitting here right now have done that job in the past.
Thank you for that. So, I'm sure you're aware of the governing body composition requirements. Can you tell me the total number of board members you have? And let me know who's the early childhood expert on the board?
So, our, who is our liaison?
Well, I'm, no, I'm the liaison, I don't know that I would be considered the expert. But I've been going to the meetings for the past year, and just personally, I have a huge interest in early childhood education.
Okay, so with your early Head Start Performance Standards, each Governing Board is required to have specific experts in specific fields. And I'll let you know what those fields are. So, the first is, there must be an early childhood expert, a legal attorney, representative, a financial expert, a parent on your board, and a community member. Those are the, that's the composition for an early Head Start Board.
I think she's talking about like advisory.
Policy, are you talking about the policy council?
No, I'm talking about the.
This is an elected board.
Okay.
So, you know, we would not have those, those things on there. You know, we, I mean, we have, we have legal representation, we have, you know, fiscal, you know, our chief academic officer.
And the staff.
So, I just, maybe I can add that as a Governing Board, we have advisory committees.
Okay.
Which cover those areas, and we each act as a liaison to that. And we rotate that so that our knowledge base is expanded as we go.
So, the advisory.
So, we have a finance advisory committee.
Okay.
We have, and we have our board attorney, attorneys. And then, of course, there's a staff attorney, and we, and we are briefed periodically, ongoing by Ms. LaFountain and her staff.
Okay. Thank you for that, that helps so much. Thank you. So, you have an advisory committee who consults the board as needed, okay?
Ms. Mitchell, if I may, yes, this is, this is the governing body for the entire district, so, and, and the, a lot of the composition, I'm sorry if you can't hear me, a lot of the composition of the, of elected bodies is either governed by the policy or statute for their particular powers and duties. So, I'm not sure if that helps to clarify what it is that you might be looking for.
Um, when she said, when she explained it as an advisory committee, and that the advisory committee is there to consult the board if needed, that's exactly what I was looking for.
That's what you're looking for, okay.
But they are required to be within, they are required to be experts within the fields that I mentioned.
So, the, so the advisory committees have their own sort of qualifications that, you know, that govern who can, you know, who can participate? And so, those, those committee appointments would flow through this governing body. So, you wouldn't necessarily find, that you'd find the expertise there, you wouldn't.
Right, yeah, yes, thank you, thank you, she clarified, thank you. Can you tell me, when was your last board governing training? Where was the training held, and who facilitated the training?
Regarding?
Head Start.
Head Start?
Yes.
Oh, wow, anybody jump in? I think it's.
We have the, the briefings.
In the briefings, we haven't had like a, you know, two or three hour time that we just sit down and, and have discussed Head Start. I mean, if, if these are some of the things that we need to institute.
Yeah.
I'm sure you will let us know at the end what we need to do.
Sure.
I would also, the liaison does participate in the training that's done with, with policy council.
Okay.
So.
But not the entire board?
But not the entire board, yeah.
Well, I think the other, the other thing too, that I guess our way of work needs to be explained a little bit better. Following the Head Start piece of today's meeting, we will be doing an action agenda workshop. So, every single thing that we vote on to include Head Start expenditures, Head Start audits, Head Start operational changes, anything Head Start will be part of our action agenda. So, we have the opportunity to discuss any questions or concerns with the superintendent and with his staff, specifically Ms. LaFountain, during that period of time. Our briefings are where she comes and presents to us any changes or new things that are happening in the program in advance of an action meeting where we would be approving that. So, we as a board have a frequent opportunity to learn about, discuss, and question anything that's happening with Head Start in the district through the structure of our meetings, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
It's, it's kind of hard because, because as Attorney Saunders said, the financial oversight of every single program in this district is taken very seriously by the Governing Board. And, and I don't want to say Head Start is just one piece of that, but the level of oversight we have is taken seriously for every single piece, to include Head Start. So, Head Start is part of the overall process that we have, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. But our boards are required to have the governance training, at least at the beginning of every program year, within a ninety day period. So, the training is supposed to be implemented every program year, okay? Are you all aware of the, or have you taken part in establishing the procedures and criteria for recruiting, selecting, and enrolling children and families in the Head Start Program?
We, we're briefed on, on all that process, and I think that would be part of our school, the choice program.
It's a board policy.
Yeah, we're informed at the briefing meetings, and then whenever a vote is necessary, that happens at the subsequent action meeting.
Informed during the briefing meeting, and then voted on at the action meeting?
Yeah, so if there are changes or, or different updates, we are informed of that. And then, if any action is necessary, we take that at an action meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Following, gathering the information.
Yeah? Are you all responsible for, do you realize what your fiscal responsibles, responsibility, sorry, and functions are? Can you explain those to me? Do you look over budgets, credit card statements? Vote on?
The, go ahead. I was just going to say that, yeah. The policy council gets detailed information at, at each meeting, and the policy council will, they vote.
Okay.
And it's her responsibility as the liaison to bring anything to the board that she feels is.
Out of line.
Yeah.
Or just anything that's important.
Right. We should be aware of, yeah.
Are you familiar with the self-assessment portion, where it must be, the program must be looked at? And the outcomes from the self-assessment is submitted with your annual application? Are you familiar with the details in that?
I wouldn't say we're familiar with them, I would say that the information is provided to us, and then we have the opportunity to ask questions if we want to. Don't ask me specifically.
What are your, what is your role when it comes to personnel policies and procedures, hiring, terminations, and grievances?
Basically, I think staff handles that process. The final decision of those things is what comes to the Governing Board for approval or, or disapproval of, of the situation. And listening to you, I think a lot of the things that you're asking are handled by staff and then brought to us, and we're informed of them. As far as being a part of the daily, you know, the process and step by step, we're more informed of, of what's going. Is, was that how you would say it, Ms. Fountain?
I, I would say that essentially, all staff, all, all of our decisions about staff are basically embedded in state statute and policy. Staff acts on appointments, changes, whatever, based on policy and statute. And the recommendation, as Ms. Gitten said, then comes to, to us for final decision.
Thank you.
So, I was just going to say, if you, if you would look at our action agendas, at, in each action meeting, there's a section on personnel. So, all appointments and changes in assignment, et cetera, are listed there, which have already been vetted and proposed by the staff and the superintendent. And then, we have an opportunity to look that over, discuss it if necessary, and either approve or not approve it. So, it's in every one of the action agendas.
Thank you. Thank you so much. How is information shared from the Office of Head Start from DC? Are you all, do you, do you all have access to any program information or IMs from the central office?
We get a regular update, and especially from Ms. LaFountain.
Right, and we get it in hard copy and in a presentation at a briefing through Ms. LaFountain's department. And we have access to any piece of information coming out of Head Start, including access to Ms. LaFountain at any time.
Okay.
The access is certainly very free.
Thank you.
And that's all on record in our, in our board archives, that's all recorded.
And I just want to add one thing, Ms. Fisher mentioned that on our consent items in our action meetings, that information will come up. This workshop is where we do a review of our agenda and consent items. So, if something from Head Start is going to be on our action meeting, we discuss it with Ms. LaFountain and her staff here in the workshop first to get all of our questions asked and answered before the consent item. So, it's not like we're just going to the consent, I mean, the action meeting and saying, yes, we vote for this.
Okay.
This is the venue that we discuss all of that with her.
Thank you. How often do you overlook, or do you see a financial audit of the Head Start Program?
I think that comes in that quarter, is it a quarterly report, Jeanne, that we, we get?
Well, we send you monthly, yeah, we send, we send you, we send you the monthly.
Right.
Reports of the budget, and then we're included in the district's independent audit.
Regular updates of the district budget, of which they are a part of, yeah.
Monthly and then annually for you?
Quarterly, I believe, with finance, don't we?
Monthly.
Well, yeah, we provide.
I mean, monthly for her, but I'm saying overall.
Okay. Have you noticed any changes in your school readiness goals and child outcomes? And that's from looking at your self-assessment?
It's, it's a part of our, early childhood education is a definite part of our legislative agenda for this year. And we talk about it constantly, the superintendent is always discussing it when he's out and so, in the community, and so are the rest of us, the importance of early childhood. And how can we work with the community and businesses to enhance that?
And I think that, I believe it was our last briefing we had on our strategic plan, you know, objective two is related to increasing kindergarten readiness. So, our specific goals for this year, you know, were just briefed to the board, it was just last, that was two weeks ago.
And we can give you a copy of that.
Please.
Document if you'd like, that we.
Love it, thank you.
Discuss.
Thanks. Has the board been involved with the process of developing and working on your five-year application for Head Start?
No, I think we look to, Jeanne's been the one who does that, and then she basically brings it to us for, in draft form, and we review it and ask questions.
That's a yes. That's definitely a yes. So, you're definitely involved. That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
What about the annual report, is that shared with you?
Definitely.
And that actually helps to drive our strategic plan and our legislative agenda. And, you know, we look at what did we do or accomplish this year? What do we need to do and accomplish in the coming year? I think, what is it, envision 2030 as our strategic plan now, and it's an integral part of that.
Thank you. Envision 2030, correct?
And we can get you a copy of that.
I can do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can pull that down.
Thanks. Can you share with me so far what are Head Start's program strengths that you see in your community?
Well, go ahead.
Go first.
One, one of the things, and my, just, just to preface it, my background is teaching, but as I say, the big kids. And just seeing these, these children, the first time I ever toured the early Head Start, Head Start, the facility, I was so impressed by the kids, and I left there saying, some of these four-year-olds have better manners than my sixteen-year-olds. And I, I was just very impressed with the forms of discipline, the conscious discipline, and the respect that the kids showed for one another, the empathy that they had for, for one another. So, you know, as, as a person who was used to the big kids, it was just really an enlightenment about how well-prepared they were. And the other thing that I've noticed at the policy council, and this was just the last meeting that I attended, there were, I say moms, there are sometimes dads, but parents, let's say, that are there, at least two or three of the moms shared that they still have children in the program, but that they also had older children who had gone through the program. And they, they were very complimentary on how much better prepared for kindergarten they felt their, their children were because of the program. And I think another testimony is, now, you may have to help me with this, Jeanne, the lady who, her children were, went through Head Start, and it's like generational, it's like, I, wasn't that it?
I think she was a Head Start, yeah, she was a Head Start child.
And, and so it was like something generational, and all of them came away with a very positive attitude toward it. And I think just that mere fact that it's, it's generational, and, you know, somebody wants to be involved in the program, just as their mom had, or I think that's a testimony to the way the program works.
Thank you so much.
And I think that, sort of, you led into this a little bit, the parental involvement in Head Start leads to a greater sense of comfort in terms of the parents' involvement in the educational process going forward, whereas there might be some intimidation there. If we get the parents involved early, then they'll stay involved throughout their, their education. I think we're seeing that pay off here.
Exactly. When I met with the leadership team Tuesday morning, they let me know that they have, they have several staff members who were parents. And they're now social workers, family service workers, and teachers. So, I just want to say thank you so much, and kudos to Lee County School Board District for implementing the. And kudos to Lee County School Board District for implementing the Head Start program and doing it the Head Start way. Because Head Start is not only for the children, but our program has 12 systems that actually empowers the family to move forward and become self-sufficient in today's society. So I want to thank you so much for meeting with me this morning. It's very informal, but I know because of sunshine laws, it has to be done this way and televised. But I just want to say thank you so much for your time. And this was just a quick assessment of your roles and responsibilities as a district. And after I completed the assessment, I do find that the board would definitely benefit even more from a recommended training and technical assistance in governance board training. So that's going to be my recommendation. And again, thank you so much for your time and doing what you do for your community. I appreciate it.
And thank you, and we just, before you go, we just wanted to let you know too how popular our program is, that we have 500, about 500 on our waiting list.
That's tremendous.
It's a good problem to have, but it's a problem we need to fix as soon as possible. And in one of our areas, we have like 90 students on a waitlist.
Wow.
So it's, it works.
It does work. And let me do, inform you that there will be a funding opportunity announcement available for an early Head Start expansion opportunity. So be on the lookout for that. It'll be posted at grants.gov. So, and Head Start only serves pregnant women and children up to three years old. So, and I'll keep Jeanne informed as well to let her know when that funding opportunity announcement is available. So you all can have an opportunity to apply and expand your love for the community and the families and children here.
Thank you so much.
I might add, and I've talked to Jeanne about this. I'm on the Complete Count Committee for the County Representative from the school district. And we've already started to spread the word among the community. And I'm going to be getting some flyers out. And she said she would promote those within, you know, all areas because we had a lot of, in 2010, there was a lot of federal money left on the table. And the whole idea is, you know, we want to squeeze every dime that we can because there's a huge need in Lee County. And it's the little kids that are the ones that are typically undercounted. So we want to make sure we do better in 2020 than we did in 2010.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Bye-bye.
Enjoy Florida before you get back to Hotland. Okay, let us move on to our agenda review. And I believe Mr. Bierman is supposed to be joining us by phone. Mr. Bierman, are you on with us? Let's see there. Do we know if he's on yet? Okay. If they will let us know when he does get on. So let's start with the agenda review process. We go down to Section D, I believe is the first, Executive Services. And I know, this is, this is an I, so, and I have one in D3. Do you have any in D?
I don't have any on here in D.
Okay. Does anyone have any, any comment? Yes, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah.
Which section?
Um, D3, I wanted to
Yes.
go for discussion.
Okay, and can we have representative from Executive Services to? Who would you like to have on that one?
Only item here.
It is approval of, yeah, and I have a question about that one as well, so.
Okay. I'll ask Cindy to come up.
They're all sitting there like, who's he gonna call? Good morning, you're the lucky one this morning. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I'm trying to just get into that.
While you're, while you're looking up, shall I go ahead?
Yes, please, go ahead.
My question was, in one of our diversity trainings, we talked about diversity and inclusion as it relates to the strategic plan. And we did come up with some items. And my question is, are we going to be able to include any of those in our strategic plan? And how we would go about doing that? I'm not quite sure how. We have the list of items.
If you would forward that list to me, I have not yet seen that. So forward that to me, I'll take a look at it, and we can see what makes sense there. Can you give me an idea of the type of, was it a goal? Is it an activity?
We did, anyone else want to explain it?
Go ahead.
No.
Well, all right. We did activities in different areas and saying, how can we include diversity and inclusion in each area of our strategic plan? So it was like statements, we can do this, or we could do that. And I don't know if it's, you know, we'll send it to you and take a look and then see how you think we should go forward on this. It was based on the fact that each of us is involved with one of the strategic plan areas. And to, I think, to be able to take that back to our area and say, this is what we discussed. But maybe, you know, you can give us further direction before that happens.
I'd be happy to. My first instinct is that that would take place in the action planning piece of the strategic plan, that you would have certain pieces that you would want to make sure in the presentations that you're doing as you go out and work on your projects, that diversity inclusion was addressed. So I don't see that as changing the plan itself, but I do see that as going into the action plans. And I'll be happy to take a detailed look at that for you.
And that is correct. It would be, how do we make this a part of what we do in the strategic plan? Ms. Fisher, are you ready?
So, in Objective Four, increase workforce success. And I did, I did request some information that I haven't yet received, so I can't like be too specific. But I'm looking at the projected targets. And I see that decreased turnover for school-based instructional personnel is available in October. So I understand that that's towards the end of the month, the information there. And then the increased retention rate. So I'm just a little bit concerned about looking at this plan and then witnessing the reality of some of the situations that are taking place on a daily basis in our schools and departments, that we are having some, we're having a lot of turnover. A lot of people are leaving for other positions in other places. Now, ironically, I was at an event the other night and talking to someone from the county who came up to me and said, you know, I'm no longer with the county. And I said, oh, no, I didn't know that. Why? And then he proceeded to explain. So I'm just wondering, like, what is happening on a daily basis with our troops in, you know, in the trenches? That is not, you know, that we're not able to hold on to people more? That we're not necessarily having the crucial conversations that might help people to make a decision to hang in there and stay with us? And I understand that this is probably the busiest time that I've ever witnessed since I've been with this district since 1981. However, this is, you know, this is our climate and our culture, and this is where we are today in 2019. So I'm just wondering, like, what are the specifics? How are we going to address those individual situations as far as personnel retention is concerned?
Well, and I'll defer in a second here to Dr. Pruitt. But let me say, you know, I serve on a number of different, like, you know, Horizon councils and obviously the foundation and work with, I've got a group where I work with the CEOs of the area. And this is a very common problem. Lee Health, at any one given time, and they're looking for 200 nurses. They are really struggling to keep the workforce. I mean, if you have unemployment as low as we have, and people have opportunity. And if you have a good work record, you have skills such as a CDL or something like that, you know, it is, it is going, we have to try to stay competitive. Yet we are a government entity, we're publicly funded. And so that makes us difficult, it's difficult sometimes to compete with the private sector. We also have to remember that we have a workforce of 13,500 or something around those, those are round numbers. But you're going to hear about people leaving, coming and going. And we have to always remember to put that into context with how large the organization is. And actually, context also includes being in southwest Florida with low unemployment, a lot of opportunity, and a population, quite frankly, is, that's very mobile. If you look at Lee County's population in general, and our student population specifically, we have the lowest, one of the lowest stability rates in the state of Florida. And I think that has a lot to do with our workforce. It has a lot to do with our housing, and it has a lot to do with the different opportunities that people have in and around southwest Florida. So, and then specifically with our workforce, I'll let Dr. Pruitt respond.
So first, let me say, because I know Ms. Fisher had asked us about this yesterday, the comparing one total year to the next is the information, we don't finalize until October because based on best practice, we wait until the FTE survey period so we make sure that we're capturing, we're comparing the same data the same time the following year. That's why that
And once the workforce stabilizes, I mean
Right, exactly.
If, you know, if you do pull this data in August, you're not going to get accurate data.
And we process so many pieces of paper that it takes a while for everything to catch up. As we continue to move forward with the electronic PAF though, that hopefully will help, but we're not quite there yet. However, on the month-to-month, that's an in-process measure for us. I look at, at the end of each month, how many people leave compared to the same time last year? We look at that regularly, every month. So we just finished our first month, and so I'll get those numbers, usually by the fifth of the month, I get those numbers to compare that. I did pull that report for instructional staff, and I got support staff this morning. So I'll also provide that for you to share with the board. And so if there is an anomaly, we, I mean, last year there was one month when the number of people left was almost double from the year before. So staff just got on the phone and started calling people. Why'd you leave? Because we do do the exit surveys, and now the exit surveys are all employees, not just instructional staff. So that's really going to help us to dig into the data. But we look for themes. Is it a particular location? Is it a particular, is it alarming? Is there some kind of theme? So we do look at that on a month-by-month basis.
Okay. So, and I think I tried to qualify my statement. And I understand that this is a global issue right now, certainly nationwide. And so I think I'm just looking for, like, what is it that we're doing? That we're doing so that we can continue to serve our growing student population and, you know, support those people who we're counting on to do that.
Well, I think we've made some really big strides relative to that. And just give you some examples, you know, one is how we follow up on the onboarding process for new employees, where you come back in within the first 30 days and we make you part of the team, answer your questions, make you feel part of that. Same thing with required onboarding that occurs, is supposed to occur at each work location, whether you start on the first day, that all teachers start, or whether you start a week later, or whether, and also if you're at a Title I school, all of those things. Relative to all staff in general, the administrators have ongoing training, which the foundation of that, in academic services and HR, really the premise of that is relationships and the foundation of relationships, that if you don't have that, then, you know, you can give them all the best tools in the world, but if you haven't established those relationships. So that training is ongoing. And I would also say that with the restructuring that has occurred in academic services and the supports that Dr. Spiro has put into place, I think you're going to see some more opportunity for those folks that are in those schools much, you know, on a much more regular basis, to be able to work with administrators and school staff to, again, work on those relationships and hopefully create that environment that you're talking about, because it is an expectation.
So specifically, within academic services, you know, he has moved from a model where we had two executive directors of school development to four executive directors of school development to give better support for our principals in schools. The team just recently identified principal lead positions. And one of the things in that principal lead position, they can tell you, this is something I asked for specifically, you know, we want positive people that really want to, that are going to help and benefit our administrators, you know, so that they can grow as leaders. This gives a district the size that we currently have, the capability of, I think, getting down into the trenches with our principals to give, to match them with an excellent principal leader who knows how to retain staff, who knows how to recruit staff. Carl Burnside's a great example. I think many of us, we're Saturday night, we heard one after another, after another, talk about Carl. And one of the things I'd said in my comments was about his recruiting ability. This is something, he's a principal lead, and just one of multiple examples. I think our executive team that Dr. Spiro has put together, and Dr. Spiro himself, I think, brings a much more positive work environment overall. And I, you know, I can see the principals responding. Just a little anecdotal data, you know, I, we take, we go along around to our principals' levels by a team. Okay, so all the chiefs and I visit each level to be there, to hear their concerns specifically from them. And, you know, this is, again, this last, yesterday, we just had a pretty cool training, I think. And the, where they really were looking at, you know, their academic plans and instructional guides and all that. But more specifically, we were also talking about, how can we support you better? We did go around to each one, and really, very little in terms of what they were asking for, had nothing out of elementary and high school, and had some very minor things with middle schools. And that's the place where you really hear if there's significant concerns that they have. And we do that, it's very, always been very open and very, you know, environment where we invite criticism so that we can better support them. So those are some things structurally we've put into place just this year alone. I think that if you looked even at our level, executive level, the composition of Cabinet, it's a very positive, hard-working group of individuals. I told them yesterday, and I'll tell you here publicly, that I've been a part of Cabinet, five superintendents, and me being number six. And been a part of Cabinet for four, four out of five, very close, you know, was affiliated with Dr. Sanders's cabinet, wasn't on it. But been a part of four cabinets. And then this team, they are, I think, by far, one of the most, they are the most talented group, in my opinion. Hardworking, positive. And I think that if you ask our principals, you will see that. They feel that they have been supported. And when principals feel supported, I think that carries off into the school building. You know, we also continue to work with, very closely with our union. And I think that continues to be a very positive relationship. And if you noticed, first time in union history do you have them nominating a principal of the year. And that's because they want to do something positive to contribute, I think, to our school district and our workforce. So the last piece is, I do really believe that the dynamic duo of Crystal Torres Nunes and Jared Eady are making a huge positive difference in this district. and Jared Eady are making a huge positive district, difference in this district. We, they are, I mean, they are out every day affecting hundreds and hundreds of lives, and they are having conversations that need to be had. These are difficult conversations about, about race, about inclusion, and, and they are, I truly feel, making a difference in terms of not just students, you know, how can we better serve our students, but how can we better work together as, as individual, and create a work, a positive place for our students to learn? And that starts with, you know, having a positive staff environment. So I think all of those things are relatively new, other than some of the, you know, stuff with the union that date back, but I think, I think, you know, you're, you're seeing a difference already, and, and I think that will help us in terms of retention. Our retention, last year, I know that there was improvements made, so 2%, I believe.
Can I, just kind of, I don't know, thinking outside the box, when you look at our organization as a whole, we retain a lot of the staff for longevity that are here at the district, much longer than we do the ones out in the schools. So have you ever looked at which comparative things, you know, lend itself to the longevity of the staff here as opposed to in the schools? And I know there's differences-
We do, and I would say to you that the, the data doesn't really show what you just said. It really is pretty consistent, whether it's the district office or whether it's the schools. We look at all different, we look at it by location, we look at it by gender, we look at it by, you know, I mean, we look at the data every which way that you can look at it, to look for themes, trends, to see if there's, you know, either something really great that might be happening in a particular work location. So we look at the work locations just like we do a school. You know, the ESE department is a work location, so we, yeah, we do look at that.
And can we, I don't know if you are planning on giving us that monthly kind of data report that you do to show those trends?
I would need more information on what you're asking for, because with HR, it's never quite that simple. I would need to know specifically what you're looking for, and then we can try to figure out if we would have, because we don't look at that monthly, in terms of the trends, that's a year-by-year thing. People leaving the schools, we look at month by month.
Okay. So maybe that's, can be, I mean, I'm not asking you to do a whole other report for us, I'm just saying if we could see some of that data of the month-to-month.
Yeah, another thing I forgot to mention, but, you know, Dr. Pruitt did implement principal improvement plans that I know have made a difference. You know, some of those have resulted in some, some leadership changes, and the result of those leadership changes, I don't hear anything from some of those locations anymore, and in other locations that, where the person stays, again, not to knock on wood here, but, you know, in my regular meetings with the unions, these are, used to be annual issues that would come up regularly in terms of some of these locations, after implementing these improvement plans. I don't hear that coming up, just-
Well, and interestingly, we had a visitor from the state FEA here yesterday, and she sat into the Spock Labor Management Meeting, and she wanted to seek me out, to tell me that she travels all around the state, and there is no district that has the relationship and the focus on employees than this district, and actually asked if Mr. Rothenberg could come do, help her do a training across the state because of the model that we, and the relationships that we have in place here in Lee County. She said it's best she's seen.
One more thing I'd like to add before we move on. It's, it's a little thing, but if you looked at the strategic plan, there is a little bit of a difference in the way the goals are laid out, and now they have the departments and divisions that are responsible, and in a lot of them, you'll see the word "shared", a shared goal. And the retention and the turnover rates are two of the ones that, that are shared goals. In the past, if you look back at our plans, it always came under HR's responsibility, and now it's not just HR, it's also a goal for academic services, and there's one for not just instructional personnel, but for non-instructional personnel as well. And all those, those are little tweaks, they do make, I believe, the statement that, you know, this is everybody's job. We knew that already, but now it's in writing, that it's not just HR who's responsible for making sure that we keep the best people, that, you know, we keep the ones we want to keep, and that we, and that we help the ones that are struggling get better. So now that's in writing in the plan, and so when we, when we went out in the schools at the beginning of the school year, you saw a lot of really great activities going on at the school level, helping the new teachers feel comfortable, welcoming the, the returning teachers, and helping them become a team at every single school that I visited, and that was really exciting to see. And I know that it's not things that didn't already happen, but it seemed like there was a different feel to it this year, that, that people were excited about the new structure, that they were excited about the leadership, and that they're really making an effort to, to build that culture of success.
So I want to comment on that, because I think that's crucial, and I think it's going to make a huge difference as we look at our ultimate academic success and closing the achievement gap with all of these newer strategies and techniques. And I do want to appreciate all of the staff for the hard work that you do every day, because I know the hours you put in, I, I know some of you probably have a roll-up mat under your desks in your offices, but I, I, you know, I just wanted to bring this to light, and then I have one more question, like regarding the principal or leader improvement plans, are those, do, do those include a timeline? I mean, it's like, you know, how long do they have to get to where they need to be, and is that a specified goal, that they know, like, where they have to be?
Yes, there are, the goals are set based on, aligned with the principal evaluation. They're given areas of improvement, they're given targets for that improvement, then there's suggested activities to be able to meet those goals, then mid-year, those goals are reviewed, and in some cases, we do a mid-year, a special climate survey for that location, if that's one of the areas that we're looking for improvement, and then at the end of the year, it completes or is extended, depending on the situation. As Dr. Atkins said, in some cases, the employees have selected to transition to something else.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Okay. Ms. Patrica, Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Vaughn.
So in terms of the information that we're requesting from Human Resources for that report, I feel like I get that information every time we vote at an action meeting on the agenda items, because it shows turnover in specific schools, so I'm, I'm just wondering more specifically what it is that we're looking for. Like, that's my favorite part of the agenda, I have to say. I turn to that first, and I look for those trends, and if I see them, I address the superintendent, and if I don't, then I just consume the material. So I'm just wondering what more?
We can discuss it later on, I can look at some of those and see exactly what I was talking about. I believe Ms. Vaughn was next, no, Ms. Giovinelli was next.
Just, let me just question, when do they have the evaluation to know what, what their plan is? Let me raise that question.
So, it varied in different cases. Historically, the end-of-year evaluations can be anywhere from May to July, and in some cases, we have to do just part of the evaluation, and then we complete it once we receive the school data from the state. So, because in some cases, a performance plan might be specific to the academics at that school, in some cases, the principal improvement plan might be specific to culture, climate, turnover, so we can do those sooner, so it just depends. Does that answer your question, or?
Well, yes, kind of, but, so, my concern is, when the principal brings up an issue that they need support, then what happens at that point, then? How does that begin?
Well, I mean, we talk with them when we first do the plan, and talk about what supports we're offering, and then they can, you know, they can request supports, then mid-year, that's looked at again, but also the executive director over that level is a little more closely visiting that school and talking to that principal than maybe some other schools, so that if there is a support that is lacking, or that they feel that they need, they can express that to the executive director. Is that what you're, what you mean, like, if they need more assistance, or?
Yeah, yeah, well, if they have concern about a specific issue, and they bring it to the attention of the district, then where, you know, that's, they just shut the ball back to us, so then what are we doing to help them be successful when they see the concern?
Yeah, it really just depends what the issue is. I mean, it, we address whatever that may happen to be, it's kind of hard to talk in hypotheticals without, you know, because there's little nuances to everything, but I'm, I'm, I can't say enough about the support that these executive directors have for those principals. And then this year, when we add again the principal leads and the new structure for the principal leads, that's going to be another avenue for that person to get support and have some assistance as well.
I mean, we typically, you know, they'll evaluate concerns, and it, it has resulted in, in some cases, the allocation of additional staff to a building, or the providing support from academic services in terms of specific training that they might see in an area where there's a deficiency. So you can, like, we've deployed, you know, science coaches and things like that to, to go help support a building that might demonstrate a need. You know, we had a building last year, for example, that, you know, some of our, our data was demonstrating that, you know, this school is, is potential, potentially one that could slip back into differentiated accountability, and that was based on feedback that we looked at when we did the data dialogues, and then also the executive director of school development, visiting that building and having those discussions with those principals. We were able to deploy additional support from academic services, and the result actually was they saw pretty incredible gains toward the end of the year, and ended up in a high C instead of slipping back to a D. So that's just, you know, an example of what we can do when we're made aware of, of a concern.
So then I'm just going to ask one more question. So when it's a matter of climate and culture, and you see multiple people leaving one location, so how, you know, I mean, that to me would be a red flag, and so is there, like, a specific process document that if you see that happening, then this is what we do? So we notify the school leader, have a conversation, and then what?
You know, again, no, it's not formalized in a process document because, and I would say to you, because of the fact that there are different nuances to things.
For sure.
If you're a first-year principal, there's a, we have a range that we consider, it's on average of people when they go first year into a location, so that would be different than a five-year principal who all of a sudden is seeing this. Because remember, the other thing that we look at on a regular basis with our in-process measures is flight risk. We look at how many people are applying for a like job, like, if you work at Pelican and you're applying for the same job at Skyline, you know, we know, like, okay, there's something, there's something to that. So, so that's another piece of the data that, that we look at, in addition to just the regular turnover, the exit surveys, and then the flight risk.
The first, first year that a principal is in a building, almost always, you see a larger degree of, of turnover.
Yeah.
It's just always the case.
Ms. Vaughn was next, sorry.
A couple of questions. Approximately, how many school-based leaders now do we have on improvement plans? Just a ballpark number.
A handful.
A handful?
Yeah.
Okay. What, one, one of the things that I wanted to say about this is, to use an old cliche, some of it becomes closing the barn door after the horses have run away, because I, I think we need to find a way to get in there more quickly. It seems like, and, you know, maybe with this new leadership from academic services, we can better serve this need, but it seems like when we have a lot of teachers coming to us as a school board, coming to you, you know, even hearing some things anecdotally, the first impulse is to, to use another cliche, to circle the wagon around the principal, because, you know, oh, let's, but we, the, the fact of the matter is, we have some schools that have had very troubling numbers of teachers who, who have left, and whether they leave because they want a similar position at another school or not, it still disrupts the, the whole process in, in the school, in terms of leadership of, of the teachers.
Sure. And so, let me say this, because I don't, and I apologize, I didn't say this earlier, Human Resources and Academic Services meet on a weekly basis, and part of those conversations are around, at the, you know, Talc Labor Management, did Talc bring up that they've got a group of folks that, you know, that are concerned. We may have, I, you know, get emails or comments from board members, you know, that I, you know, we have this issue, or we see, like I said, the flight risk, the turnover, what have you. Just like we would hope that administrators do with teachers, we begin with progressive conversations and say, this is a concern, and then we continue to monitor that. So I don't want you to think that, like, oh, we just sweep in and do a principal improvement plan. It, it does not work, I mean, there is, it is ongoing, and, and yes, to your point, I think with the new structure in academic services, there's going to be more people that will, to, to help to support that process, but I will tell you that Dr. Spiro and I just met with a principal last week, that, you know, about, here's concerns we're hearing, here's the data we have about these things, and so we do, and here's what our expectation is. So those things are ongoing, but I would say they're probably not known to the people that are out in the school location, just like we wouldn't want all the teachers to know that their fellow teachers on, you know, kind of had the talk, if you will, you know what I mean? So, so that is ongoing, it's not just like a one snapshot in time.
Okay, yeah, and I'm glad to hear that, because it's, it's like treating a wound.
Right.
You know, you want to get in there quickly, and I'm afraid that in the past, we, we haven't gotten in there, and on the same note, to me, the schools that are most successful are where the teachers feel like they're part of a team and that they are empowered, and what I would like to see, and it's, we're moving a little away, but I, I would like to see more teacher input into meaningful, school-based decision-making. We did this with Challenger just recently, right? And, you know, I was in a school for years in a different district where this, the leadership team, we literally had sat with the, you know, the finalists for principal position, and I, I think if the teachers felt like they had some ownership, and some principals do that, you know, like Mr. Burnside, and teachers like that, that do just a phenomenal job with it, and, but I think maybe if, as a district, we said, we need our teachers to feel more empowered, and, you know, maybe some kind of standardization of the idea that the teachers should have a meaningful, not a rubber stamp, a meaningful input into site-based decision-making.
And I will say, we have taken steps in the contract, we have updated that language about participatory decision-making and what the expectations are relative to schools, and how they need to have teacher representation on, if, you know, the meeting calendar, right? So that you just don't come in and say, here's what you're going to do, teachers, right? These are the meetings, but, but to make that, that everybody's involved in making that decision. So we, we agree with you, and we're moving forward, and I will say, relative to the selection of principals, I mean, we are definitely taking that input, and, you know, just on the openings we have now, the surveys have gone out to the staff and school, like, you know, visits are scheduled. I'm always going to come back to that, you know, resources, level of service, and unless, you know, we're willing to put more dedicated resources to that comprehensive process, you know, that's always a barrier. Let me just put it that way.
Well, it's either that, or we keep leaving teachers, so-
Right.
So it's.
Right.
But, but we did, we did, you know, this is something that we have done in the past, but I would not say we did it consistently in the past. I would, I would think at this point, you know, lesson learned from the last one, that it would be a, a practice that we want to, to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so we do have some time between now and the summertime. I think in the interim here, you know, it's a, you, you have so much fewer of these, so staff can take the time, like Dr. Pruitt can go out and visit Harnsmarsh Middle School, for example.
The, the challenge is the ones, and so we're going to have to talk about this, the ones over the summer when the staff isn't there.
Right, right.
And how do we do that effectively when nobody's working except the principal secretary and the custodians, you know what I mean? So, but, because we totally agree, the more people you can have, the better, it's buy-in too, right?
Right, exactly.
I mean, it's absolutely, yeah, it's just, yeah, so.
Well, and I think that goes back to the shared decision-making.
Yes.
And shared all the way down to the, to the teachers, because I think you're giving them the keys to their destiny.
Yeah.
So, and what better drives that than seeing the fruits of their labor?
Absolutely.
And so I think that, I really love the conversation that Ms. Vaughn just said. Because, and it goes, like I said, back to your shared.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that it would be key to giving them that authority to actually change their school.
Absolutely, and I, I would even say all staff, not just teachers.
Correct.
Food service workers, you know, everyone, if they can be part of, the more people that can be included.
Right.
Absolutely.
Well, and just hearing, hearing the conversation, you know, maybe just something based on the input that you all provided. You know, I, I came from two site-based schools. You know, where Gulf Middle School was a site-based decision-making school. I was a part of, of implementing that and I was, got to serve as the, this teacher leader, which was really the teacher that kind of was the liaison between the administration and the site-based decision-making governance team. So that was kind of my, my role. And I, I think it was a highly, highly effective model. I then took that model to the staff when I went to Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, same type of thing. It was not a site-based school when I went there, it became a site-based school. And I really think that's why we had, we had zero grievances during the five years that I was there. We had, we got to the point where we had almost no turnover the last three years in particular. And, you know, I know it works. So it's something that's kind of was a 1980s thing that fell a little bit out of vogue, but I think the concept is still something that's critically important.
And there's a lot of schools that do it very well.
Yes, they do, they do have that structure. They might not exactly call it the same thing. But I think may, it may be helpful for us to maybe look at some of our best practices there along participatory, participatory decision-making and bring that back to you all, just so you know what's out there now and maybe we need to think about as a school district, how could we maybe try to expand what we currently have? Because we do know it works.
Yeah, one of our plans in that area is, and again, we were talking with folks from, from the union, but is to do some training with the union representatives and the administrators so they can kind of get some training on participatory decision-making as a group together and have those conversations and build those relationships. So that's already in the works to try to do that.
Good, good, because training is, is a huge part of it.
And because of time, we do need to move on. We've got some other things to cover. We thank you so much for.
Yep.
Your, your comments, and I'm sure we will be talking about this. One of the things that I think will help as well is our ethics hotline, once that gets into place as well, will help with the participatory piece of it. So we're, we're moving towards things that will, will help us to do that. And thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Um, be, I think that's it. Mr. Bierman, are you with us?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If it is okay with everyone, if Mr. Bierman is on to answering any questions or whatever regarding his report last, at our last workshop, as well as the fact that I have a, a question on G, if we can skip to G2, because he does have to go to another event. On G2, my concern, is that okay with everyone if we do that? Okay. On G2, the concern is that we had discussions maybe last month or so concerning the, the structure of the attorney's office and how, and then we discussed whether we wanted, you know, the board attorney and the, the attorney that works with the superintendent in the district. And we voted on not having a general counsel, per se, and, because that was a discussion that we'd have one person that's basically over the whole attorney or legal aspect. And in G2, there is a job description that is called general counsel. And if you look at that, it's, it's changed the attorney, attorney staff to general counsel. And the verbiage is also basically saying that this person will be working with the board and over the, the board situations as you read through it. I don't know if anyone else noticed that.
As a matter of fact, I posted notes, that was, didn't have time to advise, but I was very disturbed with the verbiage, and I noted the same thing, that it seemed to go against, completely against what we had talked about as a board. So I, the way it is now, I'm going to tell you right now, I will not support that.
Okay. I had the opposite impression. I actually thought it was in line with what we had discussed. I see this as being the general counsel in charge of the attorney department inside the superintendent's office, not the board attorney. I think what we had discussed as a board was having a general counsel that would be the board attorney and also oversee the staff attorney function. I don't see that in this description here.
That's correct. I mean, the, the intent was to have somebody who oversees the staff, of the staff, you know, the kind of the lead of the, of the legal department that's on the staff side of things. The original concept, I think, was presented was a person who would be over both board and staff. That's not what we're, that's not what this is proposal.
That is, that is correct. And through the chair, really quickly, I wanted to kind of draw you back, and I don't have the organizational chart that was presented, but as you recall, we did present an organizational chart that kind of outlined the structure.
That's a question.
Now, on that organizational chart, I went back and looked at it. It, I had titled the position Chief Legal Officer to be consistent with the chiefs as we name them here in the district. Between the translation, between my department and HR, Chief Legal Counsel is synonymous with General Counsel. So if you were to Google that, for example, it will tell you that. And everyone is, feel free to Google it, because it will show up that way. Essentially, it's, it's a title, and it's simply a title that describes the individual that would be managing the legal services department. And that's consistent, what, what was presented to the board. And I think the, the difference is a title. So if you want to, if we want to change that to Chief Legal Officer, I don't think that's, you know, the issue. I, I, and I'm not sure what job description you have, because there has been some revisions since.
The one that was in our information.
Correct.
Mr. Bierman, since you're on, would you like to weigh in on this at all?
Yes. Yeah, no, I think that the clarifications that have been made on the record so far, we're, we're clear as to, you know, and again, we're, we're clear that the school board members want to maintain that the, the office, the separate counsel for the school board. And, you know, we presented at the last workshop, we're prepared to assume that role if that's how you want to proceed.
Excuse me, Mr. Bierman?
Or if you want to proceed in any way you want to proceed.
Excuse me, Mr. Bierman? Hello? Mr. Bierman, are you on, are you on speaker? It's difficult to hear you.
Yeah, uh, is that a good?
Yes, I think that's better. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, well, the clarifications that have been made by the board members and staff, we're, you know, we're, we're comfortable that you wish to maintain having a separate function for a school board attorney. And as I presented at the prior workshop, we're prepared to assist in that in any way that you want to proceed, whether you want to proceed to work with us or proceed to work to, to, with another, another direction, we'll assist in whatever way we can.
Well, I, I think the, the concern I had is the verbiage in there several times mentioning working with or for the board.
And Madam Chair, that was removed. I had a conversation with Mr. Bierman, a version of that has been sent to him and a version has been sent to district staff regarding those changes. So I think the version you're currently looking at isn't the most updated version. Also, changes that were made, were adding bar, being barred in the federal court system as well as increasing the years of experience.
When can we get the updated?
We can get that to you today. Again, this is based on conversations that I recently had with, I, I believe the concerns you're currently expressing, modifications were made.
And the, the main concern I have is our discussions about the terminology general counsel. So if, if it's the same as chief legal counsel, I would propose that we call it chief legal counsel, if that would be all right with everyone else. It, it kind of takes away the possible confusion.
And I don't think there's any objection to that.
And it's just my suggestion to the rest of the board. Yes, ma'am?
So, I'm not clear, so here it says, provide legal services and guidance to the school board. Are you saying that language is being taken out?
That language is being taken out. Obviously, if the superintendent has, it, it's going to direct back to the superintendent and to district staff. So again, consistent with what we currently do, the advice will go to the superintendent and district staff. Obviously, that translates over at times to the board, but it will be through the superintendent and district staff. So that there's no confusion as to what the roles are, because the school board attorney will still be the legal counsel directly to the school board.
But you will still provide us with legal services and guidance as requested just through the superintendent?
Through him, yes, that's correct.
That was actually how I read this. And, and the comment that I wanted to make was, I really like the direction you're going here. I felt like the job descriptions you provided were very intuitive, very logical, and, and I think we're going to end up in a good place as a result, once the hires take place.
And in fairness, you know, we have received comments from the board members regarding the, the positions, and we are making those modifications. Again, this is a kind of a collaborative process and hence why we do these, these briefings. When recommendations come in, I, you know, we make the changes. And actually, I made the changes last night after the student advisory committee, because I got the comment regarding the issues with the, and I, and I sent those out last night. And again, I sent a copy to Mr. Bierman because, just so that he had a complete version. I recognize, we tried to get that uploaded today, but I think we just went with the versions that were currently provided to you. So there have been changes and, and we will get those changes to you immediately.
And initially, there were, I thought, maybe I'm confused, the three positions, the, the chief counsel, the, what is it, equity and civil rights.
Correct.
Position, and then the general counsel, correct?
Correct. It would be the chief legal counsel, the two staff attorney positions, and then, as you said, the coordinator for the office of civil rights.
So there would be four?
Correct. There's, there's three attorneys, but the fourth position is a coordinator position that's over the offices, in the office of civil rights, which reports to legal. So there's four, there's four positions total in the legal services office, but only three of them would be attorneys. The other one, tech, actually, we've got, received a lot of attorney applications for that position, so it could be an attorney.
So it possibly could be. It's not a prerequisite that it be.
Correct. It's just, it's either a, a master's degree, a law degree is, in, obviously, if you have experience in that area, preferred, but again, it's just something, we happen to get a lot of actual attorneys that applied for that position.
And one last question I have, on the, the two staff attorneys, one of them, on the academic services, I believe, mentions experience in education law. Have you thought that both, and that, you know, should have experience in education law?
Yes. Obviously, one is more geared towards operations and, and labor, so employment and knowledge of construction and, and potentially real estate would be more applicable in that case, but I don't think there's any issue, any issue with there being some requirement that they have.
That they have.
Law, educational law as it relates to those areas, because it's very different with construction, because you have the state requirements for educational facilities that applies to that.
Right.
Which is very specific to educational facilities. So knowledge of education, construction laws would be probably more relevant in that.
And that will be added, can be added.
We can make those revisions. Again, obviously, we're taking any comments and, and we have the ability to make those revisions. Again, we want these positions to, we want the board to feel comfortable with the positions and the people that we hire. I think the difficulty is with any position, and I'll use myself, for example, you come in with a certain skill set that can translate into a lot of different areas, so you, it's hard to craft a, a job description that's going to cover.
Encompasses.
But I think we'll end up hiring someone that will fit the areas of the job description, but probably more than that. And, you know, it, so again, we try to get as much and encompass as much, just so that we can get that in the job description and at least get someone with, with that basic skill set.
What's our timeline on these?
Again, the goal would be to take these job descriptions for approval, advertise immediately following, and hopefully get folks on board sometime in November.
So, they can expect the changes to the job descriptions today? Okay.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn, then Ms. Jordan, then Ms. Jevon.
I, I would personally like to see whether, considering the fact that this is really, in essence, this of the general counsel or whatever name that we use for this, is a major rewrite. And we're not here workshopping this job description, we're here asking questions for a board meeting. And I don't feel comfortable voting on this without the discussion among board members between now and the board meeting, which is Monday, and today's obviously Thursday. So I would like to see this, I want, I would like to see if there's any consensus, if anybody on the board agrees with me, that we need to have had this revision, which is significant, right now. Again, we're not workshopping this, we're asking questions, and I don't feel comfortable voting on this on Monday without having a board discussion with the revisions.
And to that, I would, I would say that my understanding is the revisions are actually just, they're essentially redactions, we're just pulling.
They're major. It's, that's major. I, I totally disagree. It's a major revision, whether you have the references in there to school board. That's why we're here, that's why Ms. Gittens brought it up, that's why I brought it up. It's major, and I think it needs to be discussed among the board members once we see this. I'm not going to go on, oh, well, there'll be three redactions of those words. I'm going to go on what I see, well, it's not black and white, it's going to be red and white, and I don't feel comfortable. So I would like to see if there's any consensus to bring this back next time we do a board review and to have all of us have an opportunity to discuss with the revisions. Because we're, we're not a week out looking at this, which is statutory.
Can I ask, can I ask you a question? Are your comments directed at this specific job description?
Yes.
Okay, so.
This, this one, yes.
This one, okay. Would, would you be comfortable with the other two?
I, yes, I would.
Is that?
With the revisions.
Okay.
With the suggestions. I was just trying to look at timing too, if we had a, had, we don't have a briefing before Tuesday.
Monday.
Miss, Monday. Ms. Jordan was next.
Well, I was just trying to, I know Mr. Williams had said something about last night that you changed something after the meeting. What was that that you changed?
I made, I had a discussion with your, your attorney, the school board attorney, regarding the concerns about the language that referenced the board as being a function of that position, and I removed that from the job description.
Okay.
All the references, it's, there's a couple of places where it references advising the board, and I clarified it so that it makes it very clear that it's the superintendent and district staff.
And then I know that what we're looking at right now and what we've seen, we did receive all of this on September 18th. I just went back.
If you're addressing it at me, absolutely.
No, no, not at you, I'm just saying that as us, as a whole.
Yeah, we did get it on time, but it's not what we're going to be voting on, and my point is, that what we're going to be voting on is significantly different. And I'm sorry, I'm, I really feel like, in due respect to the rest of the board, that we need to see, we, we can't go on, well, I've redacted every time it says board. I want to see it written out, to make sure that it's something that we'd be able to discuss.
We stated that we will do that before we vote. Ms. Jordan, are you finished?
Yes, I just really want the clarification.
Okay, and Ms. Giovinelli was next.
So, could we get this soon, and?
Today.
And then talk about it this afternoon, I mean, bring it back up for conversation. I think the, the, Ms. Vaughn's issue is that we need to have the conversation before we actually vote on the changes.
And will we have time to do that this afternoon?
We need to see those changes, on what we're actually voting on versus it being different. I, so I think, I, I would agree that, there, with her, on that. My, my question is, with these three positions, does this reduce going out of just, you know, going and, and, you know, and getting consultations and so forth? Will this save money and bring us, bring it all in-house?
Absolutely.
And so that's, I think, the important question that I would have said this afternoon or today, or what, you know.
Absolutely. I mean, we're just running into a situation where it's difficult to be in multiple places at multiple times. I literally just ran out of a predetermination hearing to be here.
It's happening.
And again, you can't be in two places at once. Obviously, with additional staff, we'll have the resources to put someone in different locations and have people respond to things that would otherwise have to be sent out for just lack of time.
Well, as long as, and the superintendent just said that we will get it as soon as we finish this, if not sooner, and then this afternoon, we would have time on the calendar, so it sounds like an in-office lunch to read, and to review, and then this afternoon, at our briefing, we can bring it back up.
And for the record, the school board attorney does have it, and I know Mitch is on the phone. Mitch, did you receive that document I sent last night?
I, I found it in the board doc this morning, as you probably, I think it was posted last night. So I did see it this morning.
Garbled, we can't hear you.
It was, it was wrapped in the, the document, the school board, school board, yes, in the year for background, and I think that, as Mr. Williams earlier said, that he was going to change the title from general counsel to chief legal officer.
Okay. Mr. Bierman?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bierman, you're, you're kind of like, wah, wah, wah.
I can translate that.
Okay. Wow, are you good.
No, the answer, the answer would be...
There's some background noise.
Okay, that's all.
The answer would be, yes, Mr. Williams did send it late last night. He, he works very, very hard, and, and so we did receive those revisions last night, I do believe. And so we'll, you know, we'll review.
Will you be prepared to offer an opinion to us this afternoon?
I think so, yeah. I don't think that would be an issue.
We'll bring you a burger.
I will tell, you know, I think, I think that, you know, if we're going to bring it up this afternoon, that we may need to, to do an agenda amendment, you know, when the meeting starts.
Can it be good enough?
Yes, yes, no, but I'm saying, I think that we need to make sure that that's a formal process, because this was, it's not on the agenda for the briefing, but it is on the agenda for today, so.
Okay.
Well, can the new one be put in the agenda?
It will be this afternoon.
Okay, instead of that, an email to, that's all I want, yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
You're taking your head.
Um, this is Madam Chair?
Yes, now we hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm going to sign off, because of the difficulty with the call, and, and I'm going to leave it in Chris's capable hands, but he needs to brief you on a matter involving the approval of the auditor's contract that arose late yesterday, and that we need to make you aware of. Chris, are you prepared to, to discuss that?
Yes.
Okay, then I feel, I'll leave it in his capable hands, and I will sign off. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, you had a...
Yes, I just, this is just a point of clarification, but where in the general counsel, it says in our information, "Provide services and guidance to the school board superintendent and district administration." Reading further, it says, "Review and negotiate contracts relating to district operations, including real estate, intellectual property, litigation, et cetera." So historically and realistically, isn't there an overlap often, when it comes to those issues?
Yes, and...
So where the school board attorney, before, when we had the school board attorney here, who was just the school board attorney, and then we had the staff attorney, frequently, they had to work together, with policy issues, legislation, and, and, and the other operational type stuff. So there is an overlap where there's communication, so that, in addition to the fact that we will have our own school board attorney, there still will be communication and overlap of services to some degree.
Absolutely, and the school board attorney will still sign off on it. The, the school board attorney will, no matter what, moving forward, still have to sign for legal form insufficiency of the contract, which means he's going to read it.
Right.
The, what we've been doing lately is, we, we both look at them. I, I had a little bit more operational experience than some of our, my predecessors, and so I was reviewing the facilities and, and real estate, and we're currently working with those departments to get, because we have a lot more coming from those departments these days, to get a little bit more feedback from, on those contracts rather quickly. And again, this kind of goes forward towards the whole issue of making form contracts for the district, so that we can have a more streamlined process of reviewing contracts. So I think you'll see some template form agreements, both on the operational side and on the goods and services side, moving forward, that'll have standard language that makes the review of those contracts a lot easier. If there's a specialty area, let's say it's a land use situation, then we will refer to outside counsel that has specific expertise. It's also dependent on what, what type of attorneys apply for these positions, because we could, you know, we could get an attorney that works at a law firm, that does real estate, that wants to work here, and obviously, if they have the experience, and we can bring some of that in-house, we certainly will, will opt to do that. It's just based on who applies and what experience they have.
So then, am I correct in understanding that with this streamlining of the process, that we're going to increase our efficiency and decrease our costs ultimately?
Correct, and that's...
Overall?
Correct, and that's the plan with the office in general, is to increase our efficiency and also provide more support. Again, my, my philosophy with legal services, it's better to get it on the front end than the back end, and the more information we can get to our staff on the front end and assist them in these processes, I think the less legal issues you'll see on the back end, and it also, which reduces costs from litigation, as well as any sort of disputes that could arise.
To the chair.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, she did have her hand up.
I have a question, whether this line is going to be changed under essential job functions? There's a line, "Assign and monitor all work of in-house attorneys." Now legally, in-house attorneys, would that encompass board attorney?
No.
All right, so, how do we, how are we sure that that's a differentiation?
I think we could put "Assign and monitor all work of in-house attorneys" in the legal services department.
So, is that already in your...
It wasn't, but it will be.
Thank you, because I, I will pick on that one line, otherwise.
And can we, unless there's other suggestions, we can discuss this, once we receive it this afternoon?
Well, mine is on a different description, not that one.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the general counsel piece?
No.
No? Ms. Giovinelli?
No, mine was...
On one of the others?
Actually, I just, actually, my question, I mean, we can talk about it this afternoon, but I was just curious if we budgeted for these three new positions, and, you know, were that...
Yes, we did.
I think we did, yes.
I just want to say, under business services and labor, I, I hesitate to add education law experience, because that might make people not apply, who have significant experience in the other areas that are frankly more important. And you know that the training as a lawyer allows you to take your issue spotting and, and apply it very easily to a different statute that you have to apply. So I really don't want to cut out potential applicants by adding that as a requirement.
And, and I think that's a legitimate comment. Again, I think, you know, the goal is to, again, advertise these positions and, and get the word out. I think we will get people that fall into that category. Anyone, I'll be honest, anyone that has done substantial experience in those areas in civil practice, has at some point touched governmental practice. I mean, a lot of work is probably on the private sector side, but most law firms represent some governmental entities in some capacity, and at some point, that could potentially have touched school districts. For example, you know, Westerode obviously specializes in that, but there are a lot of law firms that we deal with, that generally cater to the private sector, but also do a lot of governmental work. And again, we usually put language in there, such as, such alternatives to the above qualifications. Again, I think it's how it's marketed. I think there will be, if we promote it well, we'll get a substantial amount of people that will fall into the area that I think we're looking for.
And part of what you're going to do is grow and groom, right?
Correct.
I mean, that's part of the whole general counsel position.
I think with operations, we do want someone ideally that has experience with the state requirements for educational facilities. It's a very specific, you know, set of rules that is specific to what we do and our type of construction. I know our operations staff, if they're present, would feel more comfortable with that, and I don't blame them. And there are a lot of little nuances there that don't necessarily transate to public, private construction, that are more specific to public construction. So I, I, I think we'll be fine. And again, if we don't find the right candidate, we'll go back out. I mean, the goal is to find the right candidate that brings the resources that we're trying to identify. And I'm hopeful that that'll happen on the first instance, and I'll use the current position that's out, the office of civil rights. We got a lot of good candidates in that position that have a wealth of experience that translates not only to that position, but outside of that position. And I think that's just a testament to having put that, that advertisement out and have it widely circulated, so.
And the way it's worded, and, and my understanding, to her question, if, if it says education experience, but then there was a line somewhere about, you know, as the board approves, so if someone comes and they don't have that specific, let them say exactly, you know, how they do fit.
Correct.
And let them defend their possibilities that way, so.
Correct. You're giving people options, and it gives us options, too, because again, we, we're, we're subject to whoever applies, and, and obviously, again, the goal is to get someone that can perform the, the necessary functions of what we do.
Hit the ground running, is what we need. Okay.
I'm optimistic.
Yes, and I think we are, too. Since we're going to discuss this this afternoon, superintendent, you want to have a last comment on it?
Well, just, I wanted to make sure that we get some clarification, probably from Mr. Bierman. I thought he might have said something about going back and using the word chief. I didn't quite understand that. And if that's the case, then that means we need to go back into these other job descriptions, and where it says general counsel, we're going to have to, so if there's a title change recommendation.
We're, we're going to review all of them. I mean, I know that the comments that were made, I'm going to review all of them. I've heard the concerns, and I've also taken some of the concerns that have been expressed outside of this meeting, and I will make sure that they're, I'll make the attempt to fully address all of them.
So, so I just want to make sure, before we adjourn with this specific point, that if, if Mr. Bierman is recommending going back to the term chief, is that something that you are comfortable, or do you prefer, because that doesn't matter to me?
I think it distinct, I think it makes this, it clearly defines the separation, so that there's no confusion about what the roles are. I think, in, in the long term, that'll probably be, we'll be better off.
Okay.
Thank you so much, and we'll see you later. Go.
You're welcome.
We got too busy. All right, thank you for indulging that out of sequence. So let us go back, we were, there was nothing else in executive services, we were down to business services, letter F? Anything, superintendent?
The first thing I have is I.
Okay. Does anyone have anything under business services that was not presented before? Okay, then...
I just had one question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
This is regards to pizza, only because my grandson just asked about the pizza at schools.
I did, too.
Why are there only certain schools that offer this? Because they choose to? Because when I seen the list, it was not all of the, per se, the high schools. And I don't need an answer now, but I would like to know that...
Well, good, I think, I think we, I think we might have an answer. I, I was stumped with that question right there.
We have the pizza-ologist.
Tracy Adams, preparing coordinator.
Thank you.
So, we did offer, pizzas offered to all high schools. We sent on a survey and asked them if they wanted to participate. So the ones that are on there are the ones that agreed to participate, so.
And then they would be offering that at lunch for them to purchase?
Right.
Okay. I just thought it was crazy.
Normally, it's like, once a week.
Yeah.
And we can add schools at any time, that's in the contract, so.
So the school then purchases the pizzas?
Right.
And they sell them to the students? So there is a potential loss, if the students don't buy all pizza? Just, I mean, just saying.
Yeah, it's a really good deal for a pizza, a whole pie, though. It's a great deal.
Because we buy them, you know, at a cheaper rate, and then we sell them. So we, we typically...
So you would, would make some...
You're making your money off of...
And if there's organizations, like, we used to have after-school stuff, and we would, you know, order pizzas, so do groups?
That's not part of this.
That's not a part. They cannot get that price.
Right. Well, they may sell it to us at that price, but for the after-school programs.
Right. Is that, I mean, are they aware of that? I, I'm just saying it because as a teacher, we're always trying to call around and find the, the cheapest pizza for, you know, 20 kids staying after school. So are they provided with a, this list, per se?
For food services, the, the participants, obviously, are provided the list, but food services also communicates with the kitchen staff to let them know, you know, that we have a pizza bid, so if you are purchasing pizza, purchase from this bid.
Right, and that's what needs to be kind of communicated to the teachers and the, you know, okay.
And I'm sorry, I just brought that up, because we've had serious conversations at home about this pizza, for like, a month, and then it showed up.
Right.
So that's why I was wondering why his school was not receiving it.
And just for, you know, your information, this is, this meets the requirements, as far as the nutritional requirements?
I saw that as well, thank you.
So, you know, part of the other question you were asking about after-school, they don't have to...
Meet those requirements?
Meet the federal.
Yeah.
It said on their wheat pizza, is it wheat pizza?
They say it tastes really good.
Thank you.
For school pizza, it tastes really, for school pizza.
All right, thank you so much. No other questions, we'll move on to G, and anything under personal recommendations, or, wait, yes, ma'am?
No. Okay, yeah, I was going to pull G1 off.
Okay.
And extrapolate a piece for discussion.
Yes, ma'am. It's on you.
So, for the administrative agenda, and the transfer and change of assignment, the executive director of student services position, I had requested some information regarding the resumes and qualifications of the finalists who were interviewed. So I don't have that yet, so I can't, in an informed manner.
You did? To all of us, or just to...
No, to Lauren, and to you.
Well, thank you.
Sorry.
Just back that bus up. Okay. So we will be happy to provide this. Thank you, Dr. Proust, appreciate your input.
Okay, so...
Okay, so, well, she...
I mean, that, that doesn't, to me, makes no sense, but that's okay.
Because it doesn't help you.
No.
Now.
Lauren is...
Well, you did get the, you already did get the resume of the name going forward. So what, what the request yesterday afternoon was, the finalist, so that was one additional resume, and so...
So there were only two finalists?
Right. The information I sent is that there were seven folks that screened through, meaning, you know, they didn't, they met the minimum qualifications. There were four that went through the first round of screening and were interviewed, and then there were two finalists.
And what we're asking for is the resumes and the final.
Of the finalists.
Of the finalists and the paperwork.
Of all seven, or the two?
No, just the four, five, I mean.
Two finalists.
So only two were interviewed?
Correct.
I thought you said four were interviewed.
Oh, I'm sorry, four, yes, four were interviewed, two were finalists.
Okay.
And was there another interview with them, or just a decision?
Yes, there was, like, there's a, yes, the finalists.
I was provided with the name of the two finalists that came out of the team interviews of the four, and I interviewed the two finalists. And remember, that's, we had communicated that with the board.
Several times.
Right, yeah, as I indicated how difficult the decision was, I think that.
And then we called every board member and talked about it.
And again, we did, you know, when, we did just receive that, you know, late, but we can, we'll be happy to get it to you. It's just, if you're just talking about a resume.
Well, and the turnover you requested also was part of that.
Right, right. So, and I'm basing my request on, once the agenda came out, the amount of response from other members of our district and our community who questioned that. So that's why I asked for that information.
And I don't, and just, I mean, the resume may provide you that information. You know, one of the things that we have to do as a team is we have the, you know, you go through the interview process itself and how they answer the questions, and you look at a person's, you know, background and experience. We had two extremely highly qualified candidates. And as I, I think I told about everybody, that was a difficult decision. But you look at scope of previous experience in terms of numbers of people that have reporting to an individual, areas where they have had direct work. And, you know, I think that all of that went into making a very difficult decision.
Right, and I know that we've had recent conversations that indicate that experience is extremely important. So that's why I'm asking for this information, because I think that we and the public, you know, need to know what that experience actually is, including, you know, numbers of people reporting to, but.
I don't know that it would be that detailed on the resume that comes out, you know, as part of the.
So let's just answer some of the questions. I mean, let's talk about the finalist, the person who is being recommended to the board in terms of, if you look at what specific experience that she has within her realms of responsibilities that have been asked of the Executive Director of Student Services, you will find that unlike the other candidates, she specifically had a great deal of experience in those, in many different areas that not all the candidates had. And I think that in the.
Can we be specific about that? Because student services is the.
Yes, in fact, I thought that was part of.
The school counseling, the school social workers, the school psychologists, and the school nurses. That's our student services. We also, what is that candidate's experience with student services?
She's had experiences with all of those areas that you're talking about, either working with them, or in some capacity supervising them, either when she was a coordinator, or in her role that she has now in terms of working with them.
Okay, so I just need that evidence, then.
Yeah, because it, you know, that's one of the things that rolled into this decision. Again, you know, you're talking about two extremely good candidates that we're talking about, and it really came down to difference in experience between the two.
And we're also looking at current situations throughout our school district regarding the mental health teams, the risk assessment teams, and the work that is done in that student services department. So my concern is that if we have someone who is actually doing the work and has been doing the work in conjunction with our schools and on the state level, that, you know, I just want to see the evidence of that experience, because I'm not aware of it myself. And then many people who are involved with student services are not either. And, you know, and I'm just going to say this, this, student services is my bailiwick. I worked in student services my entire career here in Lee County. So I really, unless I'm missing something, I want to revisit it.
Well, and I will say to you that, I mean, it was a nine-member team, of which student services was represented on the team. There was a principal from each level on the team, the chiefs were on the team. So there was, it was a comprehensive group of people that listened to the interview and the answers to the questions. And the responses relative to the experience. And I would say to you that one of the things that came out is that the candidate that was not selected was very much an expert and does a phenomenal job in a specific area relative to that, that did have some interaction with some of the other areas of responsibility, but not to the level that the other candidate did. And that came out in the interview process. And again, it was nine people that are all, you know, have different backgrounds and different experiences that came through that process and, you know, made the recommendation that ultimately was the final recommendation. Because we rank them when we come out of it. This is number one, and this is number two. And that was what came out of that team of people.
Okay, and so then, there's obviously a list of questions also? Okay, I'd like to see that, too, if I may. Is there, is there a good cause concern? I'm not clear on. This feels like it's going a little bit beyond the realm of what we do.
I mean, when I get my information, I can, I can address it further.
I just wanted to respond, good morning, everybody. I just wanted to respond to the areas of responsibility for this new Executive Director position. It is school counselors as part of it, mental health as part of it, but it's also the MTSS, it's also school discipline, it's ESC, it's psychologist, it's school social worker. So it's a huge umbrella of the whole child, and that's the premise around this entire position.
Right.
We have one question that was very specific, and it said, tell us your experience with. And it listed out every single department that falls under the job description for this particular position. So it was, it was very detailed, and there was a lot of conversation around both these candidates. And I do want to say with Dr. Atkins, excuse me? Right, the school-based administrative experience was, as Dr. Pruitt said, was one consideration. But it was a tough decision for both these candidates. Both of them are highly qualified individuals. Both of them offer a lot to our division and our team. So it was a decision that we mulled over for a very long period of time. And so I do want to just tell you that there was a lot of thought that went into the final decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Can we move to a different area of?
Yes, 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 we are, well, we were still under.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still under that same, the administrative personnel, but I had a question.
Yes.
Okay, so what I would like to have is a brief update on, you know, Superintendent, I know you've talked about John Pratt and his reduced, or I'm not clear if it's a reduced role, if it's, we're done with that contract, what his status is. And Dr. Savage is going to be the acting chief of operations. So in effect, was John Pratt like an acting chief? I know he didn't, you know, as far as I know, we hired him at $14,000 a month as a consultant. And it seems like, from what I understand, he took over a lot of the duties of the off. So just if you would clarify that, and, you know, what is the status on Mr. Pratt? Are we still paying him, or what's?
No, he, that contract was just completed with the end of September. So what occurred there was that, I think that we did update the board, but just to review, you know, Mr. Pratt had indicated, just coming back from the, really, the hurricane situation, Dorian, he had experienced some health issues.
Right, right, I remember that part.
And so he, when he came back from that particular visit back home, he made the decision at that point that he really was not able to carry on day-to-day activities and continue with the contract at the four, four, five-day commitment where, that he had been doing prior to Dorian. So what he did then was he sent a revised contract to us that dropped that service, really cut that service, degree of service down in half to about one to two days. I talked that over with our operations team and specifically gave it to Kathy Eball and Dr. Savage, and they came back with a recommendation. That recommendation is that we really need someone here, you know, every day to handle day-to-day operations of that division. Kathy actually was the one that felt, you know, it should be Ken. Ken, humble guy, did not recommend himself. And I know his, I really have been impressed with Dr. Savage's ability to quickly assess the needs of that division. Ken also had extensive conversations with Mr. Pratt about the transition plan and where he was in terms of all the things that he was working to accomplish, to including the reorganizational plan, which, you know, Mr. Pratt and Ken and Kathy have been working on all this time. So at this point, the reason that I'm making this recommendation to the board is that after these two, Kathy Eball and Ken Savage, assessed what would be the best way to move forward, they felt that to appoint him as an acting operations officer while they complete the reorganizational plan and get everything in place that they need to, they really feel that it's not in the best interest of this district to go out and advertise and put somebody brand-new in there until a lot of this reorganization has worked through. I will tell you, again, I think I've already shared this with the board, I've seen some pretty impressive work that have, has already come out of there. For example, I think I shared with you the bus transportation changes that have resulted in, we've got 96% on-time arrival in the morning, which is good. But now they're utilizing technology to make sure we are on top of that metric, and we can literally drill down by school as a result. And, you know, so I'm, that's just one. I think in terms of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas, which was a huge concern of mine, is he quickly came in here, assessed the needs, put together a spreadsheet so that we can track every single piece of what that piece of legislation requires to make sure that we're certainly on top of it. Example, just to give the board a status update there, the assessments have all been turned in and meeting the October to one deadline, including charter schools, which was quite an effort. I'll give Donna Schroll and the operations team a lot of credit there. They had to do a lot of chasing down on some of them. Some of them were not even aware of the requirements. So we were able to get that assessment turned in. The next deadline is October 15th, and then November 1. But we feel pretty comfortable, so.
I want to make clear, I don't have a problem with Ken Savage taking that. It's, why do we still need Mr. Pratt? Because.
His contract, as I said, September. We came to an agreement, and he was in full support of this. He offered the one to two days, but after they assessed it, their recommendation was we end that contract.
Right.
We contacted Mr. Pratt, he's in full agreement with that. He's actually going to retire even from Newport Board.
I guess I misunderstood. I thought you said he was going to be here.
That, and I'm sorry, that was his proposal.
Oh, oh, okay. So, but we're not doing that?
We're not doing that.
Okay, that's the update, and that's what I was confused about. Because when you briefed us a while back, you said he was going to be on a reduced schedule, and I took that to mean that there was a new contract. Okay, so that's what I was hoping you were going to say, that because Ken Savage in his very capable hands, that we probably don't need.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Oh, you had another, yes, please go.
Actually, so this leaves, once Mr. Savage is promoted, then this leaves his position open, right?
That would be correct.
Okay. And so what's the plan there?
Well, there's no plan, because he's just acting. And so the idea is to help restructure everything, and then we'll advertise the chief operating officer position, and then.
So, and to flesh that out even a little bit more, I mean, we still have, originally, he was put into the Executive Director position, operations. And when we had the Executive Director Strategic Planning and Sustainability, he would move into that role. So that position, all of which is board-approved, that position remains open. My plan is to leave that open. It'll help save us some dollars in the lapse factor. I do believe we have to move forward with the Executive Director Operations position, which is a part of what they're going to be doing. That oversees, you know, transportation, safety and security, two huge major areas of responsibility. So that would allow us to be able to seek a candidate for that area.
And my final question on it is, when we hired Newport, it was in the realm of consulting to help us to work through some issues. Will we receive a final kind of report from Newport saying the recommendations that they did provide during the time that he was working as a consultant as opposed to working as a CO?
Yes, I think we can certainly do that. The biggest chunk of it has to do with the work that was done as a part of the reorganization, which does come, our plan was to maybe bring that to you all anyway.
Right, okay. So then, that will be on the schedule to discuss with us what the recommendations were and how we're going to go forward or not go forward with those?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions about that?
I just have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I see that the two resignations at Island Coast, to date, how many have since the end of last year, or, you know, June or whatever, how many?
I don't, I don't have the end of year yet. That's what we get at the end of October.
Okay, thank you.
And in terms of this month, I should get that either today or tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
I did, though, have up until the report I sent.
And now she's hiding behind the podium. There's something trying to come out.
And you know what? Today is her birthday.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
You shouldn't be taking a birthday day, you shouldn't be.
Here she is, working real hard.
It's a board day, I'm here.
She's been riding, she's been riding on the bus all day.
I'm going to be really nice and I'm not going to say, how old are you now?
Fifty-seven, I'm proud of it.
Okay. There you go.
I'm very proud of my age, because it's better than the alternative.
Okay.
Any other questions for you to answer?
Was there anything else under?
Out of curiosity, one, and.
If it's about her birthday now, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, what kind of before-after-school program this Island Coast have? There's a person.
Oh, I have no idea.
I just.
We can find out.
It was out of curiosity, because typically, aren't the before-after-school, like childcare kind of things that schools?
Yeah, but I know, we do have some really, and I don't know if Island Coast is one of them, but I do know that with high schools, we do have some programs with our special needs students, and so they do like a buddy program, and, yeah, so. special needs students, and so they do like a buddy program, and, yeah, so, I, I do know there are those programs out there, but we, we can certainly find out.
Yeah, that, that was just basically, and out of curiosity, what they would have before-after, but I also wanted to ask about the waiver.
Yes.
Yeah, I did too.
Because.
I didn't get it.
I read through it twice.
I did it three times.
And I'm like, um, how can we vote on this?
Sure, let me, let me, let me give you that, because I've spoken to several of you individually, so let me share with you.
Oh, oh, okay.
This, so, the only, the only way that we can deviate from board policy is if the board votes on it, and I forget, it's board policy one point something, that if a individual or company can show that there's a hardship based on a board policy, that they can request a waiver, and that is what has happened in this case. We have a gentleman who works for Tobler Construction, and he attempted to get a vendor badge from us, and he was denied, he appealed it, and that was denied, and the reason was because of an offense in his past from twenty-six years ago that would, that keeps him from meeting our board policy. The previous boards have, have always supported us having a stricter policy than allows by law. I will say to you that this individual does meet the requirements under the Jessica Lunsford Act, and so if that was what our board policy was, he would have been granted a vendor badge, but we have always been stricter, so this individual has a badge from Collier County, has a badge from Charlotte County, has a state badge, but because of our strict interpretation and in accordance with the waiver, the, the Tobler Construction and the individual came forward to the superintendent and asked that he move forward with, you know, a request for this waiver, and because we've never had this before, Dr. Atkins asked that we develop a actual process document by which we would review such requests, and so that's what we're doing in this case.
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right. I think the birthday girl can have a seat, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, duh, 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 anything under H for anyone? Information Systems, Operations?
We did have, let me get back to that.
Yeah, you did have I, one and eight.
Yes, I one, approval for the final payment for GT eighteen-dash MS nineteen, rescan metal building sheeting and roof replacement, Kathy Eball will be responding. And the question is, at which location was this roofing work completed? Actually, I'll let her, when she gets here.
And then we have eight as well, so does she want to stay for?
Susan Malay will be responding to the next one, which is the recap tires.
Okay.
Good morning, Kathy Eball, Executive Director of Operations. The answer is, that is our transportation and maintenance facility on Canal Street. It's the reskining of that property.
Just curious, you could have emailed the answer, you didn't have to sit here the whole time.
Sorry, I've been working.
Just a really easy one.
Yeah, that's what the answer is. Anything else?
Okay, next one is approval of expenditures for recap tires, prison rehabilitative industries and diversified enterprises. Why are these vendors exempt from the competitive bid process?
Good morning, Susan Malay, Executive Director of Financial Services.
Morning.
Pride Enterprises was established in nineteen eighty-one by the state. It is a prisoner rehabilitative program, so the state provides training for inmates so that when they are released, they have an opportunity to enter the job market. So, the state, the statutes require all state agencies to use Pride exclusively, however, the district's not a state agency, so it is optional for us to, to use the, or to piggyback the state contract to use those services. So, after researching what would be the most appropriate way for us to go, it was determined that that contract would be most cost-effective, and also that vendor had the most experience. Some of our local vendors don't have a lot of depth in retreading of tires. I did, I also looked into, so what about new tires? So, we have a, a contract that we use that we piggyback, that has sixteen Lee County companies that sell us new tires.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on that? I had one on five. If no one else had a question on this. Are, and, and are these items, I guess they're, they're listed as repairs or replacements or upgrades or whatever, are, are these?
The flooring.
The flooring, right. Are they listed on our, the half-sent tax ongoing for each school that says the school is going to get this, this, and this? Do you, do you understand?
Yeah, so your question is, the flooring, the flooring services and repairs, is that used, do we use half-sent sales tax for that funding?
Right, and are these, now, and maybe I'm getting it wrong, on the, the half-sent sales tax list for each school, is that just repairs and maintenance that's coming from the half-sent sales tax, correct?
So, each time that we have projects come up, we look at what's the best, or the most restrictive funds that we can use, and we apply those first, so if there's a grant fund, we use that first. And then in our capital planning, we, we bound, we use the sales tax and the capital funds. So, we have a series of projects that are anticipated, and as we've budgeted, there's a River Hall Elementary project that would be using referendum funds, and there's a second project for North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, and that also would be using referendum funds, and there are about four or five other projects that would be using capital funds.
Okay, so those two referendum fund items will be on their list, on that ongoing project?
Yes, on our dashboard. I hope you guys have been checking out the sales tax dashboard, that's a, a very novel and up-to-date, real-time tool that we have every day, the sales tax expenditures. As we pay for expenses, we post that information to the sales tax dashboard, so we list the expenditures by school, and so as these jobs are completed, they would be posted on, they would be listed in the anticipated column, and then as they're completed, they would be posted as completed, uh, sales tax expenditures at that school.
Is there a way to, I know it's basically just talking about the sales tax, but is there a way to show these other items and maybe just list something on the side of them on the dashboard that they're coming from another fund? I'm just saying that, you know, that way parents or in community can say, these are the things that are happening at River Hall.
Right, so there's a, a very focused effort to communicate the sales tax information exclusive of all others, because our public wants to make sure they know what that is. So, the sales tax dashboard is for the exclusive representation of the sales tax expenditures. Our budget has the information for the capital expenditures, and we have listed, for example, in this item, the different projects that would, you know, so the public has access to how are we spending these, these, you know, what, what are the specific projects that we're working on, but we, we don't want to commingle and, you know.
Right, okay.
We don't want to overinflate our sales tax usage.
Right.
We want to be very specific and very clear when we have sales tax information to only provide that on the sales tax dashboard.
So, how would a parent then know the other things? Is there another?
Just as we've been doing all of our lives, until we've had the sales tax monies coming in for the past nine months.
Just telling you different schools.
It's, it's district operations, so they'll see it when they visit the schools, they'll see it in the capital budget, they'll see it at the board briefing meetings, and, but I think that what you're giving us an idea to consider is, what is another way to advocate for all the good things that we're doing in our schools and share that, those capital expenditures and the improvements that our schools are realizing.
Which could be a part of like the DAC and SAC process?
Right.
To just add a update?
And, and, you know, there might even be another good way to just annually say, these are all the good things we did this school year.
Or that we're doing.
All the, you know, where your school dollars went, whether, that were separate from the tax.
Right. Yeah, Ms. Jordan?
I was just going to say, you can also share it with all these forums that we're doing.
Yes.
Just, you know, if you have it out there, you're sharing that information, because I believe that we base on, depending upon what the cost is, is where that money gets pulled out of, correct? What the cost is for each project.
Right, well, so what we're doing is, there are only four categories that we can use to expend sales tax on, construction, maintenance, safety and security and technology. So, we have additional projects going on, and then when we have those, those four categories of projects that can be funded either through sales tax or through capital funds, and as I said, we, we look at what's the least, most restrictive funds and use that first, and we look at our balance, we anticipate how much tax we'll get, we're, we're making sure that we're, we're spending that appropriately, and we're looking at our capital budget, which is not, you know, endless, and making sure, you know, that as projects come up, that we allocate them either to the capital budget or to the use of the sales tax funds.
So, just one last comment, then, so I was looking at I two, and, and my comment was going to be, you know, this is, and thank you for the sales tax dashboard, that's awesome, but visiting schools, people have commented to me in passing, oh, we're going to get canopies, you know, out of our portables, and we've had, you know, been waiting for a long time. And so the conversation has come up a number of times that thanks to the passage of the sales tax, we are able to do a lot of this, and really, I know we had been off our maintenance rotation for a while, and so I think that there are people who are, you know, visibly aware and happy at the schools that a lot of this is, is able to be done, and saying, what, what a great thing for a half penny, so.
That is a very good point, we are able to use our capital dollars, stretch them further because we have the sales tax to alleviate some of those expenditures.
Exactly.
Which allows us to get back on, and I know that we're working closely with operations to get back into a, um, assessment of what our facilities are overall and, and rotational movements.
Thank you, okay, thank you very much, no other, oh, yes ma'am, Ms. Julie.
Okay, so I'm actually on River Hall's, um, on the I side, and I don't see the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand as planned, I don't see it on here as...
Right, so the first thing we need to do is obtain board approval for the contract, and then, as we, you know, everything's not instantly updated on the website. We do have, and, and this is a good clarification point, the sales tax dashboard shows expenditures, which means we have paid for the work, so we operate kind of as a cash operation, so we encumber funds, we do the work, and then we inspect the work, and then we pay for the work, and so when the work is paid for, that's when it'll show that it is an expenditure that was realized, and we are working on taking our plans and, and looking at forecasting of what we anticipate spending, but the actual payment is once we've actually closed out a project.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Uh, no other questions, let's, we're a little ahead of time, so, board member comments, and let's start with Ms. Morgan.
I have no comments.
Oh. I'm looking at the one, okay. No, okay, all right, are there any other, we'll go to the order, comments?
I'm not sure if it is or not, but I have a question, and it's regarding the training, because I'm still not really comfortable with the training and the cost of that, especially because we don't know where, we concentrate so much on money and how we're spending it, but yet, I have no idea, I don't know if anybody else does, what that end result will be for this training that's coming up with the travel and everything, plus I think we just had the other two, which were probably, I think, four thousand each, which is eight thousand, so collectively, how much have we spent thus far and going forward to make us all work together?
Well, actually, one of the, actually, one of the things I wanted to, I can answer to that, is that the first two trainings, remember, were not team-building, they were basically, I think the first one was unconscious bias, and the second one was a continuation of unconscious bias with, and diversity, dealing with our strategic plan. This is technically the first and only one that is purely, you know, team-built and working with us, when the other two were defined differently, they had, uh, different agendas, this is the one that gets down to how are we going to eat the elephant? As far as...
What is the elephant cost in this then?
Well, okay, so let me just explain the cost.
Please.
The total, I think we came up with like six thousand, I believe, eight hundred, however, in the other two sessions, they were half-day sessions. This is a full-day session with two trainers. They have actually, because they want to, you know, assist us with this, are taking half of what they normally would cost. So, we paid close to five thousand, four thousand something for the other trainings, and that was for like half the time, and one trainer, this is two trainers, it also includes discussions, pre-discussions with everyone, and hopefully everyone's had that opportunity to voice what they think and, and their thoughts, and all of that will be a part of the training as well. They have really been over backwards to cut the costs so that we could get this done, because they feel that it's that important for us to do, and if, if we had used someone else for a full day's training like this and the interview, I mean, that's taking two or three days of time to talk with everybody individually, so we are getting more than what we're paying for with that.
So, we're looking at about over eight thousand dollars?
No, six thousand eight hundred.
Well, there are flights and hotels and all that, that's all included?
There's, the one lady is coming from Portland, Oregon, and Daryl is coming from Orlando, she's flying into Orlando, and then they're driving here together, because she was going to fly in here, but it was cheaper to fly to Orlando, so, trust me, they're looking at everything to save money, they're using their hotel points as far as the hotel rather than paying full, full rates, so they are trying as best as possible to assist us. When you look at, even when we had FSBA, I think it was four thousand five hundred, something like that, and that was four hours for one person, so we're looking at a full day with two people with the pre-work, and pretty much, what's the word for it, scaled to our needs and our situations. I hope that helps, any, anyone else?
No, I, I was just curious, because I...
Okay.
I should, I should know the answer to this, but I don't, but what was the, what was the lunch plan? Should be, you thinking about food, but...
Yeah, and every time I do, I forget to keep thinking about it, so, are you going to do Italian? You know you were up next.
No, but I, I didn't know if we should order from someplace right locally there, or...
And I think then, if we do, and everyone just pay for their own, is that?
Yeah, lunch on our own, yeah.
I mean, we can order all in and everyone just, I mean, we've done, we did that with the legislators last year, that Carol ordered the food in, but everybody paid for the food to cover the sunshine and all the other ifs and ands and buts, so, I will, you know, definitely look into that, and, yes ma'am?
I was gonna, if it's okay, I was just gonna call Robbie Ribstorf and ask her for a recommendation, because I know that they probably order food from Jerry's or someplace near the bank.
Right.
And, and then people can, we can have a little pre-menu, and people can pick what, what works for them.
So, thank you, Ms. Fisher, for taking on that job. We appreciate you.
You're welcome. It's my therapy.
That's, that's wonderful.
She's Edison, isn't she? It's not her bank.
Okay, is, does that answer everyone's questions about the training?
She's Edison.
And everyone is aware too, that on the November tenth, we had briefly, briefly talked about this, we will have the training of April, April's last name?
Griffin.
Griffin, will be here from FSBA. We're going to be Susan Correct at the foundation. And the four hours in the morning will be our board training that April's going to do, and then the afternoon will be our reorg discussion that we have, that we've said we wanted to do. And probably, we'll do the same thing for lunch there, that we'll order something in, and everyone just be responsible to pay for whatever. Maybe we can ask Marshall to give us some suggestions on that. So, thank you Superintendent for taking, he's pointing, he's already pointing.
Delegating.
Delegating.
He's been delegating.
I know, I know. We're getting good at that. Okay, any comments or questions on that? Yes ma'am?
No, I had a different go-to-the-order item.
Okay, well, go ahead, and then I'll go back to the travel, 'cause I have something I have to bring up, or Mary will hurt me when I go in there. Go ahead.
So, I'm not feeling comfortable with the way this meeting was conducted today, and it's been conducted for the past couple of weeks. I thought we were supposed to get our questions to the superintendent like by noon yesterday, and then a list would be provided to us of all of the items that are questions by board members. And I know that some questions are gonna come up during the conversation that are unexpected, and just come about as a natural course of the conversation, but there were a lot of questions that were asked today that were clearly pre-planned, and, and like individual board members knew those questions were gonna come up. From a personal, very selfish perspective, I like to be prepared, and I don't feel prepared when I sit down at the table and my colleagues are asking questions that I was unaware of, and I don't think it's fair to staff. I think Dr. Atkins needs to have his staff prepared to answer questions when they're sitting here, and, you know, making sure that only the staff that needs to be here is here. So, am I misunderstanding what we're supposed to be doing, or are we just not doing what we're supposed to be doing, or can we have a discussion if we're gonna change it, so that staff knows that it's gonna be different? Or can we all be silent?
Comments?
I believe that you're correct. When we first started this, that was the reason we were supposed to have everything in, in advance, so that everyone would not have to be here, and they could be doing the jobs that they're...
And I didn't even send mine at eleven fifty-nine yesterday, I sent mine like the night before, right? I was like early, which never happens.
But I was guilty about pizza today, 'cause I couldn't...
Other comments, board members?
I apologize for asking, but I was...
It's all good, if we could just give us notice and give staff, can we all agree that that's what we're supposed to do?
Right, yeah. I guess I was waiting for information that went somewhere else, that's all.
Well, and, and again, I, I'll, I'll say, look...
And I felt very pressed for time, again, you know, the one-day turnover, because we have other, you know, we have other commitments and other obligations, and sometimes finding the time.
We've had that discussion, and, and I think we kinda feel like we're stuck because of the notice piece, and we've paid the news press and all that, but it just... Just an email, if we could just send that email?
I've sent an email before for questions, though, and I didn't get answers. And they weren't addressed, so, it wasn't addressed the, the next, at the meeting, so, prior to, so...
But the questions relative to the agenda should be...
It was, it was, there were, there were questions of the agenda, this was a while back, but I was able to answer, get them, the answers at the meeting, so I didn't, I didn't press that.
Okay.
Yes ma'am?
I also think that we ought to reopen the conversation about, you know, whether it has value doing it the way we do it, because it has been disruptive changing the process. And so, I think when we come around to our meeting on whenever it is, November, what is it? Tenth, yeah, that, we ought to, okay, so we've done this for six months, it's a new process, let's look at it, and let's say, does it work? And, and if it works but needs fine tuning, then we'll fine tune it. If it doesn't work, what, what, what is it that we would like to do that we feel would make it better for us? But I think, the point I'm trying to make is that this has been changed, it hasn't worked exactly as we anticipated. It was a middle-of-the-year course correction that was very disruptive to staff and to us as board members. So, I think we ought to have more clarity as we move forward in November about how we're going to do our work, and, for the entire year, and then a commitment from individual board members to stick to whatever we agree our way of work will be.
I also have one more. And, and I also, I mean, I like understanding and listening to what everybody has to say on this day, but it drives me crazy when we rehash it on the action day.
Yes, I agree.
So, if we're here doing, if we're here to do this, that we need to do it today and not rehash it again on the next day, because that's for us to be able to do our, to vote on it, because we've already spoke about everything here.
And, I don't know, personally, I feel that the work we do is so fluid. It continues to move, the target continues to change, and I don't know if it's possible for every one of us to know every question that's in every one of our, the other people's heads, so that, I, I don't understand the, the comment of being able to investigate it before we come to the meeting, and it's a question that someone else has. I think the purpose was that if one person had a thought and a question in their mind, that they could explain it and discuss it with staff and get the right answers in this setting. Not that it would be, everybody has to research it, and everybody comes with their answers. But, this is kind of like that individual, you may look at something one way, and you look at it another way, and you bring your questions, and this is where we discuss it. I, I guess, I, I really don't understand, if I have my questions and you have yours, how is that going to me giving you my questions, which are my own thought process, and I give it to you, you know, three days before? I get the part about making sure the superintendent and the staff has time to answer the questions. And we do need to do a better job on that, but...
Well, it's what we agreed to do.
Okay.
And so, when we're not abiding by the way of work that the board has agreed to do, I, I, I mean, if we wanna change that, that's fine. I will tell you that when I see other people's questions, it helps me to look at an issue in a different way. And, and again, for me personally, I like to be prepared. It, it's, it's simply a matter of preparation for me. So, if we wanna change the way we do it, and we agree as a board to change, that's great, but up to this point, we haven't decided to change. So, the expectation is, we provide the questions by noon yesterday, and then before we all sit down here, and I would so greatly prefer to have it by email than on paper, we get that list of questions.
Yes ma'am.
That's what we agree on.
And, and I wanna piggyback on what Chris said. I, I mean, I have found this very helpful, to hear other people's questions helps me to be more prepared in many ways. And, and I will make an effort to be right on time from now on. Thank you.
And I will...
So, I just have questions. So, Ms. Pedricka, you send in your questions?
You see them, they're right in front of you. I send an email to Jen Schaefer with a, a bullet point. I have questions on I one, approval, at which location was this roofing work completed? And frankly, Dr. Atkins, Kathy didn't have to be here for that. Like, there are some questions, some of the questions I ask are like curiosity questions, and I know that Jen is good at deciphering what those are, Kathy didn't have to be here to answer that, she could've shot an email to the board and answered that question. So, I would leave it up to your discretion to determine who needs to be here and who doesn't. But what you're seeing, Melissa, is what you have seen from me for the past several weeks.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, what, what we will do, and what we, we, we're working to refine our, our process, and, you know, and Jen and I have tried to work out a way to, in terms of the questions, what's the best way to present it, and so, she actually now is working, 'cause it, it started out with, board members would get questions, and we would send out to staff responses, and then all these emails came in, and now I'm holding a stack of emails, and she's trying to put together some questions. So, now, it's refined to the point where she's created a Google Doc that goes out to our folks, and so, everybody answers on a single document, and, and, and then they are prepared to, to present that. So, so that you don't have a situation like, if Ms. Giavennelli did not get a question answered during this particular time, you know, it should've been, 'cause it would be, everybody would see it right there on that piece of paper in the future, and then, and then the response will be there. Now, if a question comes in late, after the deadline, you know, we may not be able to get it on, on the piece of paper, and, you know, I can't, I can't guarantee the answers with that as well, that's why we have staff here. And usually, what we've found is that, that a question causes another question, you know, so that's, so that's why, you know, staff is here to, to respond to those questions. You know, we're happy to do whatever works the best. Our goal is to make sure that you're comfortable when you have to vote on it on Tuesday night. And that's our, so however that works for you all, we'll make it work.
Frankly, it's hurting my relationship with Jen, she thinks I'm the only pain in the butt with questions, so...
Oh, no, we know you're not. I mean, everyone has questions.
Be careful when buses ramp up. Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I have a commentary about what Ms. Jordan said about rehash. Just because something is discussed here in this forum, doesn't mean that we're done with the topic. Maybe we are, because there are some simple things, but maybe we're not. Maybe when we ask the questions, perhaps the answers that we got weren't satisfactory to, to our belief that that particular item is warranted for a yes vote. Or maybe it just spurred other questions that, I'm a big processor, and so, you know, I take notes, it looks like everybody here takes some kind of notes, and sometimes, after I sit down and look at it for a third time with the notes after this discussion, yeah, I do wanna bring it up again, or I do want to bring up some other aspect of it. So, you know, I, I don't think dis, further discussion is out of place, I, I just wouldn't use the word rehash, because it has such a negative connotation, and I, I don't think that's what many of us are doing when we bring up the same topic again.
Well, I'm certainly not trying to be negative, I just know that, I feel that when we're all sitting here together, we need to have that conversation, as you said, and if we don't understand, then we have the opportunity to ask those questions, so that way, we have clarity of what the answers are.
But sometimes those answers don't, do you understand what I'm saying? Just because we get the answers, we may not like the answers individually, and we may want to bring it up again. So, that, that's what I'm saying.
Fair enough.
Sometimes the community needs to see it, as a question...
Exactly.
They get to see it when they watch this tape.
This is televised, so we are here for them, so we do not need to restate everything on that meeting night, just for television purposes, because it is televised.
I, I, I think we have covered this, and everyone has given their opinions. It's eleven thirty-nine, so, one thing we definitely need to get, on the travel, there's two travel issues that will be coming up for vote. And one is the Seventy-Fourth Annual FSBA Conference, and Mary, Ms. Reader, needs to know no later than Friday morning, the following from each of us, who is attending, how you will be traveling, how long you will be staying, because I believe there's some people that may not be there the whole complete time, and she needs to have this information by Friday morning. Now, we will need to, I'm thinking, bring this for good cause, because she has to make sure the reservations are held. She's already made the reservations for the hotels and, and our conference reservations, and there's a deadline for canceling. These conferences, as she said, fill up so quickly, that when she sees them, she goes ahead and secures the space for us, and then we can opt out, but we need to know so that we don't have to pay if you are not going to attend. With our process of anything over five hundred dollars, then I believe this will have to come before us on Tuesday for good cause. And then also, I wanted to attend the Finance Two Point O, in, on next, the tenth and the eleventh, at Howland Hills, and I will be taking my car, not charging travel, and it would only mean the registration and the, and the hotel. And the, I will be staying at a different hotel other than the Mission Hills, so it is cheaper. And I just to, I need to know, actually, I'm already registered, but I need to know consensus on that, because today is the last day to cancel, if you all choose that, I shouldn't go. So, I...
That's, that's training, that's...
Right.
Board member training, that we don't typically get permission from each other. We tell Mary and/or Susan that we wanna go, they make the reservations, and then we vote as a board to approve that expenditure.
Right, and that's what I'm asking for.
Isn't that on the agenda?
Madam Chair, yeah, I believe that is on the agenda to vote for the next action meeting, am I...
Well, I do know that the cancellation is as of five o'clock today.
Okay, okay, I understand.
That's why I brought it out. I spoke to FSBA yesterday, and it was stated that by five o'clock today, we have to cancel or, you know, commit. So, I don't know, how would we handle that?
Well, the approval would have to be by vote per the, per the statute. What I'm gathering is that if you're, what essentially you would have to do, is if there was a need to cancel, then, then the approval would be, would need to be denied, but it would have to happen at the action meeting. So, I understand the, I guess, the, the situation in which you're trying to gain consensus right now, so that we know that we've got a, whether or not we've got to cancel, I don't think that's an issue, but there's still going to have to be a vote on this at the action meeting.
Right.
So...
So, can we...
It's nothing to do with that, they need to do the contract.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
It just says one board member.
Is it?
Oh.
For, for Finance Two Point O?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not points, it's just an extra class that they're having.
I asked to go, I asked to go to that as well, in an email, months and months and months ago.
For the one till next week?
Yes.
I'll get with Mary.
Ms. Morgan has her hand up too.
But we usually have confirmation, I mean, we know who's going, I mean, you know if you're going or not.
Right. Yeah, I did, I, I mean, that's between you guys and Mary, I suppose, because I, I thought I was the only one that was going, I, I wasn't aware of two others.
You're the only one we're approving.
Who else, Kathy and Mary?
Not, not if it's in October, no.
It's next week.
It's next week.
Thursday.
Yeah, I'm gone.
I can't see my calendar, because the computer won't work, so, I'll get with you back there, and if we need to change it for Tuesday, we'll change it.
So, it'll be Miss Atkins and Mrs. Pedricka? Okay.
And Ms. Morgan?
So, how does that affect the agenda, then?
Good cause.
Yes, we'll have to, I mean, we'll have to amend it, and we'll have to...
It's not, it's in a way that I can do it.
We'll have to put it under a good cause, I'll make sure that that's, that's doable, but that, I think that's the only way we're gonna do, because the statute's clear, we're gonna, we have to have a...
going to do it because the statute's clear, we're gonna, we have to have a vote on it, so...
Right.
Revise the agenda items that are in there?
We'd have to do a good cause, I guess, right?
I don't, well, here, let me see the... Uh, yeah, so, I mean, since the agenda's already been posted, I don't know if we can revise the...
Or Ms. Pedrika?
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably the most conservative approach.
And Ms. Morgan?
No.
No, Ms. Morgan's not going.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Morgan said no.
Okay, okay.
So, and I'd just like to bring up the fact that the value of this meeting is, right now, finding this out at the last hour, I mean, it's very valuable, so, I mean...
Okay, and I wanted to, the last workshop that, um, I just attended with, with Finance and Bargaining, um, with Ms. Jordan, and I would like to put it on as an item on one of our workshops to discuss some of the things that came out of that because, uh, there are some ways of work that we are doing that need to be, uh, looked at and revised according to FSBA and the two attorneys that were there. So I, with everyone's permission, I'll put it as a workshop item.
And, and, everyone has received their...
Yes, everyone got it.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Right. But then we need to go over some of those things as well, so we'll put it out. The last thing, the RSM contract?
Yeah, um, so, uh, we received, uh, word, uh, last night, um, that there may be, um, an Attorney General opinion, um, interpreting the, the statute, which is, I believe it's 10/12, um, uh, with regards to employing an, an auditor. And the interpretation that we're hearing, uh, that the Attorney General may put forth is that, uh, that position must be, uh, someone that's employed by the district and not an outside contractor. That is, that is an informal, um, that is, that is, I guess the best way to say is that at this point, it's hearsay, but apparently that's, that's the position that we're hearing, uh, may be the, uh, the informal opinion by the Attorney General. In, in that vein, uh, with regards to the RSM contract, we may have to, um, we may uh, we may either have to amend it, um, um, or we may have to terminate. We are evaluating that now to see if there's, you know, if there's any sort of amendments that we can, can make to it, but before, um, before that contract gets finalized and executed, we will, um, we will be looking into that.
What's our timeline on that?
Uh, well, I plan on, uh, I, I found this out, uh, late last night and didn't have an opportunity to call this morning, so I plan on calling, um, at lunch to see if I can get ahold of the Attorney General. Sometimes that's very quick and sometimes...
It takes so long.
So, uh, I can give you guys a brief update, you know, um, at our briefing meeting this afternoon if I get ahold of them.
And have you contacted RSM or do we...
I've been playing phone tag with RSM, actually, um, so I'm, I'm going to attempt to call them as well, um, during lunch.
Okay, um, did we cover everything? All right, and this afternoon, um, we will discuss everything that we... Said we would carry forward, so, all right. If nothing else, I think we are adjourned until 1:00. And we will be up there.
Madam Chair.